Republic for which it stands, blind nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Madam President.
Griffin?
I move that the tonight's agenda be adopted as printed in place on file.
Thank you. Is there support? Thanks Dee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, is there any board member who would like a consent agenda item to be removed and acted on separately? Seeing none, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Gina. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. We've reached our first public commentary. This is for agenda items only. Any public commentary? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to board correspondence. Griffin?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our Board of Education reports. Bedford Township Government, Amy?
Nothing new to report, other than construction in front of Smith Road.
Thank you. Bedford Township Park Board, Griffin?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Michigan Association of School Boards, Megan?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Policy Committee, I think we just have a one fall, couple of... Yeah, a couple of pieces and parts that we have to go through, and we will be scheduling a meeting to walk through that, those policy changes. Monroe County Association of Board of Education, Amy?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you.
Pass on your seat pillows.
I was gonna say, we've arrived. We'll move on to our superintendents' report, and I will turn over the next couple of items to Dr. French.
Thank you. Madam President, first item in the superintendent's report tonight is consideration to approve the resolution regarding the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the probationary teacher contract, and you have three items underneath that. The second item is consideration to approve the emergency operation plan, with the two items under that, and then the consideration to approve the purchase of the Maplewood property, the CTE home build lot.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and start with the first item. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the resolution regarding the superintendent recommendation to terminate probationary teacher contract?
Madam President.
Amy?
I move that...
Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution regarding the superintendent recommendation to terminate the probationary teacher contract as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
I feel like I heard Dee.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehor?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our next item, the consideration to approve the emergency operational plan.
Madam President.
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education approve the emergency operational plan as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Gina. Any discussion around the emergency operation plan? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehor?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Okay, moving on to the consideration to approve the purchase of the Maplewood property. Can I get a motion?
Madam President.
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the Maplewood property, and the amount of $45,000 for the CTE home build project as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Amy. Any discussion?
I do.
Sure.
What is the balance that they made off of the house?
So, off of the first house build, they cleared 100,000, just over $100,000.
So, that 45 will be taken out of that. That does not leave them too much to build a house. Okay, might sit on some property for a while. Isn't this in a property, a pretty well-developed area? Like, you're talking $300,000 homes, I believe? Back in there, in Maplewood, does anybody know?
I don't know what the value of the home, but yeah, it's an adjunct property that was part of a larger house, home, house that was theirs, a property that's sitting between two homes that...
Sure.
I mean, I'm gonna guess they're 200, maybe 300,000, just depends on what's going on.
So, it roughly leaves them $60,000, and they don't have plans yet, correct? We don't know any of that yet.
Yeah, I think that, what I have, what I understand is that we will build a home very similar to the home that we built over on school. Which sold for, what was the selling price?
It was just over 300,000.
Right, so it's in the same, it's the same size, cost.
Ballpark.
Ballpark as the homes that are in that area.
I'd like to really know from Mr. Vogel. I hope he gets a lot of donations on this one.
That's what I was gonna ask, if he plans on...
Yeah, I'm sure that the intent is to do something very similar, right? We can only do what the community is willing to do.
Right.
But I know that that, there are some donations already.
Right, I thought he gave.
Lined up, to the extent of how much that equates to in terms of finances. I do, I did talk to Dr. Schultz around this being a one-year or two-year build. I know that we had, I had talked with Mr. Vogel when we were visiting the finished school. I know he had spoke to a two-year build versus a one-year build. I don't know that that's locked in at this point, but I...
That would make more sense than if you're talking, the money we're talking. Yeah, that definitely would make more sense.
And at the end of the day, right, the board did advance the program money to build the first house and received that back. The original lot that was, we were looking, well, no, the lot that was on tap to be, I don't know if it was donated or we paid the taxes, I don't know the, you know, it was less than $45,000.
Yeah, it was 20.
We drove through, I personally, I've seen both lots. I went to the other lot, saw that other lot.
Oh, yeah, no.
It was, yeah, it was not in a position to be, I think, someplace that we wanted to.
It would've cost over 40 by the time they put electric and gas.
Electric and gas.
I'm just saying that... It leaves them 60 to start out with, and I'm sure they wish...
A cash that's theirs in that fund, but the board, we would vote again on advancing them additional funds to cover whatever is not donated from the build. I'm sure Carl is going to come to us and say, hey, if they need $100,000 to buy the plans and the lumber and the roof, whatever it is, we would, you know, we would vote, we would choose to vote to advance that, and then take the funding back at the end of the bill, similar to what we did this year.
Yes, and don't get me wrong, it was wonderful experience for the kids in that. I'm just saying... There's not 300,000 for this house, is what I'm trying to say. There's no way that that would be approved.
Right, we didn't ask for 300, they didn't ask for 300,000 to begin with.
No, I'm just saying, it could go up to that, though, if they're gonna build a larger home.
Right, I think...
I like the idea of the two-year. I'm hoping that is better.
I can attest to that. When I've heard Ms. Lantina and Mr. Vogel talking, they actually prefer a two-year build because of the learning experience for the students. Yeah.
And then that spreads the money out, because it's already purchased. That's, I'm just...
Yeah, I have no doubt...
I'm just pushing caution to the wind right now.
Right, I have no doubt, just as we saw demonstrated with this build, that we will, the district will be paid back in full, and the program, we estimated originally that the program wouldn't break even, right, for several years. The fact that we were able to sell that home for 300,000, I forgot the number already, was fantastic, right?
Oh, I knew we would make money off of it. There's no...
No, the program. We had not intended for the program to break even the first year.
They're not quite self-sustaining yet.
No, I know that. I'm just saying, we need to watch...
Right.
Next year's budget is fine. It's the following year that you got, that we're gonna feel the wrath of what they voted on in Michigan.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying, playing caution to the wind, I have no problem with this purchase of this lot at all, and I have no problem with them building. It's a, it's a learning. I mean, these kids are gonna go out. When I visited, they had to do spreadsheets and everything. They knew, they were learning the whole thing. I'm just saying, caution to the wind, I like the idea of the two-year, and I would like to hear that from Mr. Vogel first. Because they will be coming to us for months.
They will, and we, just like they did last year, they'll come with a presentation and a plan.
And I said no at first, and then they came back and they had $85,000 worth of free stuff.
And it's a good thing they did, because if you would've said no, we would've been sitting on no learning experience and no funds.
No, we wouldn't have had $85,000 worth of free stuff. That's what we wouldn't have had. So, okay, that's my, that's all I'm asking. That's all I needed to know, that leaves them 60,000.
Okay, before they come to the board and ask for support.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly. Okay.
All right. I have one more thing to add.
Sure, go ahead.
If you remember, during the first house, we were, I don't think he was expecting the amount of support that we eventually got, and he did say that there were a number of vendors who, I guess, for lack of a better term, missed out on that one.
There's 17 waiting in line.
They were, had more waiting, okay, not this time, but we'll get you on the next one.
Yes, yeah.
So, I don't have any doubt that this will be hugely supported, like the last one was. I understand what you're saying. Also, this, we're not real estate investors, like, we're doing this to provide experiences and opportunities for the kids. So, we're not just doing this to make money off of selling houses.
We don't make the money, they do. It's for them.
It's all their stuff. They do, they do the budgeting, they do the ordering of the stuff, they do everything. And I would also add that the Realtor who has this property for sale waived their commission as well.
Yep.
So, I have no doubt that the community will come out and support this like they supported the last one. But I'm all for this. I know it'll be a success, but I'm not trying to...
No, I know.
Detract from what you're saying, because I understand it completely.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it ended up, it was 120 that we ended up, or maybe 130 that we ended up giving them.
Right.
After the 85. This time, I'd like to know if it's gonna be over 200 or 250, or whatever that they're gonna need, so. Just playing caution to the wind.
And...
They sit on the line for a while.
Well, I think the last one took two school years anyway. Am I wrong?
Yes, yeah.
So, you can't build a house from a grass lot to a finished house in a school year anyway, so...
Not with four hours of daddy.
Not with, right, they're not putting 12-hour shifts out there, so.
Right.
It'll take a while, just like the last one did, and I don't see it not being successful, personally.
Okay, thanks Griffin. Any other? Seeing no other comments, this is a roll call vote. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehor?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our financial items. Chrissy, are you presenting this?
Yes, I have one item for the board tonight. Each year, the state releases an adult meal pricing guide that dictates the minimum price we can charge for adult meals, and this year, we need to increase our adult breakfast price. Our lunch price is fine, but the adult price for breakfast does need to increase. So, Shelley Ferris, our Director of Food Service, has recommended that we increase that price by 20 cents to $3.10 for this year, just for adult breakfast.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the increase of adult breakfast prices for 2024-2025?
Madam President.
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education approve the increase of adult breakfast prices for 2024-2025 as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Gina. Discussion? Chrissy, can you remind me what the lunch, I know we're keeping the lunch the same, but what is the...
Lunch is $5.25.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehor?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Thanks Chrissy. And we'll move on to our instructional items, and Dr. French, back to you.
Thank you. Madam President, we have one item tonight. It's the recertification of the Return to Learn and Continuity of Services Plan. This was developed by Dr. Schultz in terms of what is our plan for mitigating and ensuring that learning is occurring during something like COVID-19, so we have a plan in place. So, that's a good thing, but this is also required by our federal grants that are in place right now. You have to revisit it every six months to determine if any changes are necessary. Dr. Schultz is not recommending any changes at this point, and this is actually the last time the board would have to do this related to the current federal grants.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for, a motion for the consideration to approve the recertification of the district learning plan?
Madam President?
Griffin?
I move that the Board of Education approve the recertification of the district learning plan as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Megan, thank you. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehor?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our personnel items, and Alex.
Thank you, Madam President. We have five items, personnel items for presentation and board action this evening. The first is to consideration to approve non-affiliated hourly rate increases. These are substitutes, are third-party vendors, they can be anyone from a health aid, lunch aid, parking lot monitors. So, we've, this is a group that hasn't seen a raise in about two years, so we'd like to propose, it breaks into about a dollar per hour raise, which translates to about a 6% raise over two years, which is about 3%, which is about what our other groups have been at, so we would like to be fair with this group. So, that's the first one. Would you like me to go through each one?
Please.
The second one is consideration to approve new Monroe Road Elementary social worker, Rachel Brubaker. The third is consideration to improve the new campus and student support specialist position for Jeff Polly, that's a newly created position, as is the school social worker position at Monroe Road. Number four is consideration to approve BEA new hires. We have sixth grade instructor at the junior high, Caitlin Rains, kindergarten instructor at Jackman Road Elementary, Paige Gibson, and third grade instructor at Jackman Road Elementary, Haley Walling. And the final fifth item is consideration to approve BEA resignation. The reading specialist at Jackman Road Elementary, Amy Brunella, is relocating out of state. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for the first item and the consideration to approve non-affiliated hourly rate increase of 2024 for 2025?
Madam President.
Amy Bissell?
I move that the Board of Education approve the non-affiliated hourly rate increase for the 2024-2025 as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Gina. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehor?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve new Monroe Road Elementary social worker position?
Madam President.
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education approve the new hire of Rachel Brubaker, social worker position at Monroe Road Elementary as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Megan. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the new campus and student support specialist position?
Madam President?
Griffin?
I move that the Board of Education approve the new hire of Jeffrey Polly, campus and student support specialist position at the senior high as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Amy. Any discussion on this item?
I just, oh, sorry. I know that, I mean, I know that I had a conversation with Carl, and he filled me in on what this position is, and I think it's terrific. I don't know, Dr. French, do you feel equipped, I don't wanna put you on the spot, to share for the public what this position is, or if not?
Alex, maybe Alex.
Oh, maybe Alex.
Sure, so this is a unique position that we found, reducing our administrative team, down one administrator when Mr. Avalos retired at the end of last year. We're down about 300 students overall at the high school from peak population, so we think that this would be a nice way, it's grant-funded, we're fully grant-funding the position using Dr. French's 31A funds from the state for at-risk groups. And this position will kind of fall, while Jeff Polly is a retired sheriff, he was the undersheriff in the county number two, in the county on the chain of command, so it can be quite an asset to our district with his experience. But the position is somewhere between, it's not quite a liaison officer, he's not carrying a weapon or anything like that, but it's somewhere between an administrator and what a retired liaison officer would bring to the table. So, his job will be to go around to ensure students aren't vaping or vandalizing restrooms, making connections with students. There are a lot of our kids that just need an adult, an advocate to communicate with. He has the skills to do that, to de-escalate situations. A lot of times, when our students, when they see an adult, you know, there could be an opportunity for turmoil or something, and his situation's really gonna be about building relationships. So, we think he's the right person for the job. It's a unique position, again, but I think it's a win-win for the district, especially because we're using grant funds to fund the position, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I just wanna say, great job, Alex and Mark, you guys getting the funding and everything, and finding a person to fill that position. Nice work.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the BEA new hires?
Madam President.
Megan?
I move that the Board of Education approve the BEA new hires A through C as listed below as recommended. A, sixth grade instructor at the junior high, Caitlin Rains. B, kindergarten instructor at Jackman Road Elementary, Paige Gibson. And C, third grade instructor at Jackman Road Elementary, Haley Walling.
Thank you. Megan, is there support?
Support.
I think Amy Bissell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. And the last, can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the BEA resignation?
Madam President?
Gina?
I move that the Board of Education approve the BEA resignation of Amy Brunella, reading specialist at Jackman Road Elementary, as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Dee. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Alex. We've now reached our second public commentary. Is there any public commentary? Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we will move on to our announcements from, we don't have anyone from the school yet, so we'll start with you, Alex.
So, I have a few items. I just wanted to thank the board for being so supportive this summer. We are in a great position to start a new school year. We are fully staffed with our certified team, so. We don't have a, you know, at the last minute, sometimes, we're scrambling to find a teacher, or, you know, assistant principal, something like that. We are fully, we had 25 paraprofessional openings, that was what I was most concerned about this year. We filled 19 of our 25 in the last three weeks. So, I wanna give a shout-out to, again, the supportive board, our proactive administration team, supportive superintendent, and I have to give my girls in my department and the HR department, they have worked so hard to make sure everyone's onboarded in a timely manner to start school on Tuesday with all of our students. So, we're not exactly full with the parapros, but in a far better position than I thought we would be, so, and I think that, and I appreciate the support of our non-affiliated, that $1 seems small, but it means the world. Not only does it allow us to show, here, we're gonna give you an extra dollar an hour, but it shows that we have faith in them, and it's a retention tool as well, and recruitment tool if we do have turnover, so I just appreciate all the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes, Madam President, excuse me. It's been a busy summer, thanks to a dedicated staff and hard-working staff. I don't think the district, the facilities have looked better. I don't know if you've been through the schools yet, but they look amazing. We did not have any huge projects this summer, but we had numerous minor projects. I personally reinstalled the bell today, so that'll be available for tomorrow night's game. Hopefully, we can use it. We are starting the concrete, will be poured tomorrow morning at, around the baseball press box. The trainer and referees rooms is being completed, I think they're just wrapped up about 10 minutes ago, so that'll be ready for tomorrow, tomorrow's game also. What else was I, a bunch of other things. That's all I have. Thank you. Oh, the auditorium floor. It is finished, there's a little minor tweaking that has to take place, but overall, the auditorium is completed.
Great.
Now, shows will happen on it, so, be taped and everything else that happens.
Okay, I'll go over here to Chrissy.
We just continue to finalize our preparations for the audit, which will start in two short weeks. They have decided to come on-site this year. Since COVID, they were doing virtual, but they figured this year, they would come back and show their faces and visit us, so they will be with us for three days. We're welcome to have them.
Thanks Chrissy. And Dr. French?
Thank you. There's just been an excitement in the air, when all the new teachers were back Tuesday, everyone was glad to see each other, and they were really excited. I can attest to the HR department's moxie in getting all those people onboarded, because I had a complete, I had on my complete group of new teachers on Monday for new teacher induction, and they were actually here last week for technology boot camp, we call it. And the elementary teachers had some key trainings for literacy and assessment, so that all went well. And a couple of weeks ago, 26 of us were at the PLC Institute in Grand Rapids to take that in. We had a special honor that day. You might remember, a couple of years ago, PLC leader Mike Meadows spoke to us at the beginning of the year. Mike has been named one of the most influential educators in the world. And our facilitator for Solution Tree asked me, well, who would you want if, because we had a big enough group where we had our own room for team time, she said, who would you want? Well, I would like Mike Meadows, and we got him. So, Mike Meadows came in person and talked to us for, we only get him for 10 minutes, but it's a good 10 minutes.
That's okay.
Yeah, so we were honored by that, and we also have just had our two professional learning days, many good things being learned by the teachers, highlighting that they had their first training on the new elementary English language arts materials, wit and wisdom. So, they had their first, they had seven hours of training over those two days, so they can kick off the year and dig into those lessons with the students. And just a preview for the September meeting, it being, it being beginning week and so busy with everything else, we felt it was a little much to have big presentations tonight, so we deferred to the late September meeting. We'll have that summer school presentation with you and the data summary, and then also, I have a larger data summary for you, so, for September.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the Board of Education members. Amy Drehor?
Well, I don't know, it might be my age, but it seems like summer gets shorter every year, but I'm looking forward to getting back into a routine and hope to see everyone at the football game tomorrow night.
Amy Bissell?
I'm so excited for the school year to start, honestly. I do, I did notice something the other day, Tom, at the junior high, I went there, and the doors were supposed to be locked, and I was able to get in the back door without even using my badge. So, I don't know if we could, I, school's...
So I don't know if we could, I, school's about to start. That's the only reason I bring it up. And then also, um, could we get an updated end-of-life list for our, do you remember that list?
I, yep, I curated that list.
Well, thank goodness. Lisa, can we get an updated?
Yeah, and I think, uh, for our back-to-school, the September meeting, um, we'll look at, um, slating that for, I I don't know, September meeting is looking pretty large, so maybe we'll do that in October. Okay.
They'll give, since we transitioned from Kendra's retirement, Lindsay's getting up to speed on the curriculum portion of that, so that'll get through some time to catch us up with this, at least our instructional services part of it, but I'm not sure the status of the rest, but.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get an update to the board.
Thank you.
Gina?
Well, I just think it's gonna be a great year. My kids are gonna be in eighth grade and eleventh grade, and one is really excited and one is on-board, but, you know. He'll go. Anyway, um, I hope to see everybody at the football game tomorrow. Go Mules. It's gonna be a great year.
Thanks, Gina. Dee?
I can't wait for school to start, but I have a question. The door was unlocked?
No, the doors.
Or it doesn't lock?
The doors are locked. It doesn't close all the way. It doesn't latch.
Do we, did you?
It's been addressed. Sorry, we didn't take care of it.
Okay. Before school starts, we don't need another Texas thing. Is it?
Thanks, Tom. Sorry.
Thank you.
Nervous.
Okay, but I I can't wait for school to start, because I'll have to go. That's it.
Thanks, Dee. Megan?
I, uh, I love seeing everything that happens in the district over the summer, um, all the work that all the staff and the teachers and our facilities and HR and everybody does, you know, to make things great for our students is super exciting. Um, I'm really excited that we're, um, purchasing the new, uh, property for the CTE build. Um, I think that that's just such, it is sort of the epitome of our slogan of educating for life. Um, and so I just absolutely love that, and I'm really excited for the new school year.
Thanks, Megan. Griffin?
This is my favorite time of the year.
Why is that?
It's getting cooler.
I agree.
Well, when I, when I first joined this board, I think I just had one or two kids in school, and I didn't have as many kids to begin with. This is the first year that all six of my kids are gonna be in Bedford. I've got a young five, a first grader, a third grader, this is our odd year. Young five, first, third, fifth, seventh, and eighth. So next year, I'm gonna have kindergarten planning and high school planning at the same time.
Disappointing.
But, yeah, we went, we went to the open house yesterday, which is always exciting, to see all the, the, the teachers and all the kids, and, um, they look amazing. I was telling, uh, Dr. French, one of the teachers that we hired this summer is my son's third-grade teacher at Jackman. And she has the room all done up, you know, it's, it looks awesome. She's talking to, to the kids, trying to figure out their interests and, and, uh, all that stuff, so it's gonna be a great year, just like it always is. I wanna commend Alex and his department, because I know in years past, we would have like, half this page would be like teacher hires on the August meeting. And I'm not a teacher, but I can only imagine that it's a lot easier when you get the, the, the knowledge that you're gonna have this job at the beginning of the summer instead of the end of the summer. So that's, that's a testament to not only you, but all of our teachers, um, being able to move around and adapt if needed. And I'd also like to say thank you and recognize Jason. If you've been on the, uh, if you've been on the Facebook page lately. Wow. Wow, he's, he's waded into that swamp, but also the, 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 the graphics and the little clips, I don't know, gifs or whatever. The, the, it's, it's just amazing. Um, the difference is huge, so we appreciate that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, again, welcome, Jason. Appreciate, um, familiar face and, and this role, and, um, I've seen little hints in, uh, of your touch already, so I'm excited for the things to come. Maybe the side navigation bar, I screenshot and send to you. I will send to you. It's been a thing for Gina and I on the app.
Black text on the dark.
I'm sure you're aware. Yes, perfect. Um, so thank you. It's, it's great to, to have you on board, and I know your, your talents will continue to, um, to light up the place, so. And and Alex, again, I think I mentioned to you before, earlier, um, even back in May, and we had an opportunity to talk to some of the, the new hires in June. Um, and I asked them specifically, have, did you, have you heard from any, they're like, we applied for five different places, and Bedford was the first, and only to contact them that early in the process, so I, I agree, Megan. I think staff really appreciate knowing where they're gonna be, where they're gonna land, getting their head around their grade level and, and their, their rooms, which are such an extension of them, so appreciate the effort there. And Tom, I've been in a couple of the buildings. They do look fantastic, the grounds. I'm rolling over to see the bell, because I'm excited about, um, that, excited about the, the, um, the iron metal, the horseshoe mule thing. I've been watching the progress on social media for that. Um, that'll, will be fantastic, so.
It really does. It's amazing.
Thank you for that. Um, and Chrissy, I know you'll do fine with the audit, and whether onsite or virtual, you know, uh, I know that's a lot of work. I don't want to discount. I know you all work very hard on that, so I appreciate the effort.
Listen, I really appreciate a good spreadsheet. I'm, I'm here for you, Chrissy.
And Dr. French, um, I'm a big fan of the PLTs, since you brought those here to our district, and whether you get ten minutes with a fantastic mentor, I know you continue to look after those and, and provide mentorship through the year, so, um, I appreciate that. And, uh, you know, this is always a favorite time of mine as well, uh, of the year, to get everyone back in and seeing all the facilities. Um, the open houses allow the parents to get in and see the work that's been done and how great the buildings look and, and the staff coming back, so. Um, I look forward to, uh, a fantastic year and appreciate the board's presence on, um, all of the meetings that we have, uh, this summer to help support getting, uh, the district ready for, uh, back-to-school, so. Uh, with that being said, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, Amy, uh, I, you, I'm assuming you got that. Amy Bissell, support Gina. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Seven twelve.
Hey, Griffin?